Good, Justin.
Yes, welcome to the planning board meeting of Wednesday, November 19th. This meeting is being held live and remotely as well. And so keep that in mind if you're going to be speaking via Zoom, that if we can see your background, the whole world can see your background. And first I'll do just call the colleagues, call the board, Justin.
Present.
Eric.
Present.
Adam.
Present.
Artie Clark, the chair is present, and Justin's the vice chair. And Natasha says she'll be a few minutes late when she comes, we'll acknowledge that. To start off, we have the A and R plan for the 5258 Avalon Road. If you have a look at it, if you have a chance to take a look at it.
Idea, it looks like they're subdividing, they're subdividing a lot and kind of transferring the section to another property. Is scene compliant with any compliance, either on the site plan or anything else?
No, the plan is fine. It's been reviewed by engineering and it's been reviewed by staff. And I think it's entitled to me. It is actually described, basically, a parcel is coming off of block two A and is being conveyed over the left fifteen.
Eric, do you have any comments? Justin?
I don't have any comment.
No comments from the chair as well? I have no problem with it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we endorse the A and R plan.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion, Eric.
Thank you. Justin?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. That brings us to. You need to make a living somehow. Bring this item to, Hank, why don't you come on up, why don't you tell us about the, the Paulit zoning changes you're looking forward for the planning board to send off the select board? And any changes, any little changes we had conveyed from last time in relation to the parking, some parking questions we had?
Yes. Hopefully, this will go as fast as the last one.
Do I have a, do I have a motion?
We can skip it out if you want. Do you want on the express lane?
Well, I, I first will ask, have you all looked at the information that came to you?
Yes.
Do you have questions?
No.
Okay. What more do I need to say?
Credit to stop will be a headache.
So, Mr. Chair, I may. I, I really appreciated, I just want to put this on the record. I really appreciated your responsiveness in working with, in working with your, the design team and the engineer to answer the question of, you know, parking. I'm totally satisfied. I appreciate the approach that was adopted. And then I move that we, that we.
Well, if you make an emotion, I just want to make sure if anyone, anyone, anyone else that comes. There's another problem. Justin, do you have any comments as far as what was presented to?
I'm having some very low audio. What were you saying, Artie?
Justin, do you have any comments as far as what was presented, what was presented as far?
I do not have any comments on the, the proposed bylaw with regards to Paulit.
Eric?
No comments, but what did that go Adam's statement about? You think, thank you for the presentation last week. Thank you for the information and explanation. Really put thought into it and we appreciate those efforts.
Yeah, thank you as well, Hank. I like the comparison showing the other schools of what they were doing as well. So now if we can have a motion.
I move that we send the zoning amendment as presented in our packet, having been further revised in the prior meeting for our comments, discussions at that time to the select board with respect to amending the zoning bylaw for Paulit.
I second the motion.
Okay, double seconds. Adam first, Eric, Eric beat you to it, Justin. Justin?
Aye.
Ian? Eric?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we beat the last one, but he's standing close.
It's not like you have.
Tim, we've been saving up our time for years.
Always enjoying time with you guys.
Oh yeah, do we need, are we gonna take something else?
We only need four yet, right?
That's true.
Yeah.
We only need four. So I say.
Sure, we're happy to start.
What do you think? Jay, go for it, and Natasha should be in there in a minute.
I think we should give her a couple. Yeah. She participated in the project, so.
Would it be helpful if we had to answer any questions in the interim?
Uh, I think.
Or just wait until she gets here?
I think we told you, if we're gonna wait, we should just wait. What's going on, Ed?
Is there an operative clause?
Yeah.
It's just a missing operative clause.
Yeah, we must want to see it. Sounds like a good idea. Let's go to a minute.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of the minutes of October 7th as presented in our packets.
You're going pretty fast. You sure it's gonna get Natasha enough time? You sure?
Second.
Did I have a second on that one?
Second.
Okay. And this was for, which state was this?
October 7th.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Justin?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye on that.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of the minutes of October 21st as presented in our packets.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second by Justin. Justin?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, those minutes were adopted.
While we're waiting on time, I could just update the board if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
There are some updates before.
Agenda item five, I haven't had time to reach out to further businesses for the center business reform, nor the mixed use area. So I will endeavor to do that.
Then we can do, do you want to, do you want to try to focus something on the mixed use?
I want to continue. I want to do both simultaneously. I just need time to make some more calls.
No, I appreciate, no, I appreciate that. Okay, so then Natasha's done. Hey, Lee, you want to go to some reports? One of, who's not here yet, what do you think?
Sure.
Sorry, didn't meet you, we can't.
So I was just gonna say that last night we held a large house community meeting. And there wasn't even a president, don't you want to speak to that, Artie?
No, it was not. Go ahead to give your part.
The group, you know, presented the work that they've done so far, which was the fiscal impact analysis and was also basically a presentation of generally the recommendations that the board is considering, or the committee is considering, which are adjustments to FAR, adjustments, adjustments to coverage, adjustments to the, the front yard setback requirement to create an average, and adjustments to height. And I think it was pretty well received. There are, I think we had, what, 25 people, 30 people at town hall? And I think another 30 people participated. Forty-five? Forty-five? So it was up that high. Forty-five, I guess, I guess online. And so the committee's next step is to basically take what they heard at that meeting last night and to make some decisions about what they're actually going to recommend in terms of a finished product, product back to you with an anticipated handoff to you, I think in mid-December. So.
Remind me, are there, how many reduction models are there?
There's, there's basically three.
And so one is roughly a 10% reduction of current FAR, 120 to 30?
Yeah, right, we're looking at the three. And we truly have not decided what we're going to do.
It sounds like the committee's not going to decide, they're just gonna present the options.
It depends. We'll, we'll see where the conversation goes. Because I don't know for a fact. We may, we may just present the option, we may put what our preferences, what we see as our, as the most popular preference, and obviously we'll decide to name the thing. Yeah, I thought the conversations went well last night. We had some, we had some good feedback, we had some interesting feedback, things that we can look at, some questions that were raised. But some, so we'll take a look at something and see what may impact our decision, because I, I don't know. And so I truly have no idea where I'm going.
Was there any concern about the impact of property value?
Sure. Oh, sure, yeah, no, that's certainly, that was, that was a conversation that we've had ourselves. And that was a conversation some people had as well.
Last night.
Yeah, so that was, that was, some way that they raised that, they were questioning what might be. We did present our fiscal analysis. They weren't questioning to say our analysis necessarily, but they were raising their concern, you know, as far as what might happen, just as the board did themselves. But again, we have, which is interesting, we have some spreadsheets of all the properties, basically in SRV, the properties, we have some demographic information related to those properties, with the value of the properties. So it'll give us something interesting to take a look at. Yeah, I'll be very interested to see what that shows, because I don't know, I know. So that'll be interesting as well. But again, it was a good conversation. It went, it went, it went the game, it went the gamut as far as where we had a conversation. It went the gamut as far as where people were. We tried to, we tried to get, you know, so you know, asking people, please give us your preferences. And a couple of people said something. Most people didn't necessarily say directly what they wanted. They were just listing some concerns of comments they had and questions and pros and cons, and either way. Yeah, anyway, so that was, so is there anything else?
Um, the Stephen, what the Stephen Palmer Committee is, is meeting, and we have our second meeting, actually, of that group tomorrow night. The first meeting was just kind of an overview of what the scope of work was, and what the timeline was, and what the work product would look like. But tomorrow night, they'll be reviewing basically the existing conditions assessment that was done on the building. All the, all the members of the committee have visited the building, they've taken a tour of it. And we now have an existing conditions report, a zoning analysis, a legal analysis. So that's going to be presented tomorrow night. And I think then the committee's going to talk about scheduling its first community meeting is to get input on reuse options at that property, open it up to a more broad-based conversation.
Is there an option to consider a new structure be built, kind of on the field closer to great?
That might be one of the options that come out, come out of all this. I mean, right now, it's just, it was just kind of this first step was to basically understand the condition of the building, whether or not it makes sense, or is, is it possible to retain the building and what are the pros and cons of that? And then I think the next step is basically to look at land use options.
One second. Justin, how well can you hear us right now?
Right now, I can, I can hear you. I can, yes.
What about Adam and Lee? Could you hear them okay?
I can hear all of them, yeah.
Okay, okay, so earlier there's a concern.
Yeah, no, I, I had fixed, the audio issue was on my side. It wasn't necessarily on. Well, it initially was on your side, and then the, I subsequently fixed an issue that was on my side.
Thank you, Justin. Eric?
Lee, I, I know that, that committee is in its early stages, but just talking about decisions in large house review committee, what's the overall timing of the schedule to eventually come up with recommendations?
Uh, the, the plan is to finish, to finish their work by the spring. May, May of 20, May of 2026.
This, this Stephen Palmer.
The, the recommendation coming out of that group.
So it would be for the zoning change for the special.
Well, if there is a zoning change, it depends about what, you know, what the town decides to do, what the town decides to do with it, really. Not sure.
But if there were a zoning change, probably.
Probably in the fall. We should start with that.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, may have to start without her. Okay. Okay, one is, yeah, welcome. Just please reintroduce yourselves to the public.
Tim Sullivan, Gulfstream Source.
Tim Biner, Director for Greystock.
And Will Harnett, Associate with Chris.
So Tim, I know that you've been in conversations with Lee as far as some changes to your order of conditions and redlining and change the, change your request and some back and forth as far as what makes sense. So Lee, you know, I've read what you've had. Is there anything in particular else you'd like to talk about?
I don't know, we tend to walk through the changes we made on the red line or.
I'm, I'm happy to do that.
If you have any questions on the changes we made, and I know there's a specific question on section 318. We left that part of our phrase.
So with respect to the changes from the, that were redlining in our packet, I was, I was satisfied with those. There are a couple of things that I wanted to review. Some other things that I wanted to review, if I don't know if you had a chance to see some of the correspondence that was in the packet.
Yeah, yes. So, if I may, so first of all, thank you, Lee. She did a great job as always. I know this is a new process, and the first draft of the decision was, was great. And, and what I offered was really sort of clarifications. I think most of what you see was sort of section references and those sorts of things. But we did have the opportunity to connect today on some, I'll say my changes are sort of with the eye of like making sure we can, can comply and explaining to lenders and investors and things of how we do that. During the course of that conversation, we did touch on some of the comments that were submitted. And at least in one of the changes was specifically to address the directing construction vehicles to come in on major arterials versus on side streets. And Lee can tell me if she disagrees, but I, I think we thought the rodent control was covered adequately, that the dust control was already covered adequately, and what Lee had done. And there were some questions about being able to restrict access to, to West Street. I mean, you know, candidly, that's not something we ever contemplated doing. The, the site works better having two access points, you know, there's a train and the light over there. And so when you're constructing the site, the site actually, the building actually goes right to the MBTA property lot. Yes, there's a whole sorts of reasons we actually need both access points, and the project has always contemplated that. So Lee and I went through all those things, and, and what I, what's reflected in your red line this afternoon addresses this as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I saw, Lee and I talked briefly about this, and I agree that the two access points makes, it, it makes the most sense. You really have to have that. And as far as the rodent control, it's a board of health issue.
Yep.
And they really could take part in that. I mean, I, I personally, I do hope that they find a way to not use poison. These are some other methods, but they'll have to take care of that, because I know that, you know, general residents around will want, want to make sure something happens with that. And I do agree that, you know, some, you know, some Susan Herman, someone from the public was making some comments about what they'd like. And I do, I do agree that the arterial access only is, is important.
Yep.
To not keep them off those sidewalks. So I think that's important.
Yes.
And, yeah, that was the main thing that I found.
How's that achieved during construction?
So, I mean, Tim and Will can correct me, but you know, generally, as construction setup, there's construction management plan. There's, you know, a designee already in the decision that we had drafted to be responsible for kind of coordination with contractors and, and those folks, and they'll inform those. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so they'll inform people of the rules of the road, no pun intended, you know, for all sorts of construction, but also access.
And should we clarify that the rivers are, that the rear means that off West Street?
I'm sorry, clarify what?
So one of the, one of the concerns was raised was, it says in our decision that deliveries will be at the rear.
Yes.
Um, which I think we colloquially refer to as really the entrance off of West Street as opposed to Highland Avenue.
Well, I think it's really the rear of the building that faces the MBTA track, which you can get to from both sides, really.
It's the west side of the building.
Or are you saying?
It's the west side of the building.
I don't know my orientation. I don't have a plan with a north arrow, but. Okay, I'll take your word for it. It's the train station side.
Which, which entrance, where are they going to come off, Highland Avenue or West Street?
Either.
Both.
You can get to that rear entrance from either, just like you can today.
Right. So I think there is, you know, Justin, I would defer to you as our traffic expert, but there is some concern about trying to mitigate the amount of delivery traffic through Melon and those streets, right, that come, you know, that end at Highland Avenue. So I don't know what, what effort can be done to try and mitigate. If I'm UPS, I'm going to head to that, what would really be the south side, the south entrance off of Highland Avenue. I probably would go by Melon or Cary at some of those streets, because it would effectively be straight through.
I mean, so right now, the decision requires that we notify all those carriers to use the rear. I'm, I'm sure we could, you know, suggest that they use the rear via West, if that's something that is, is helpful.
It's probably, you know.
But my question is, and I'm, I'm just thinking about this. If you're, if you're saying deliveries via West, are you having a UPS truck turn around within that back parking lot, the turning radius isn't? So that means they're going to be exiting and discharging onto Highland if they enter in on West? Which to me is, and that, and I think some of the concerns of folks were now that are they, are they shooting up through Melon? Are they shooting up? Those are public roads, right? And at, at some point, I, I don't know if, if a restriction is, you know, A, this is just a request, because B, you know what I mean? This is, this is all public roads. So, yeah, we can say certainly they can come in via one entrance, but there's, are they going to have enough room to turn around and come back out? I think some of the concern was back on Highland. Is that correct?
I guess the way I would respond to this is to say that, I, I think that the circulation is, is, you know, well laid out, so people can maneuver around. I, I personally would say that we should just let people come into the either entrance or exit, because as someone who drives through that area, when the train tracks are shut off, you're going to have a traffic backup, and to be having more people waiting in that, I mean, you should just be able to use either entrance, and I, I, you know.
To be clear, I mean, I'm 100% in agreement with you, Tim, with regards to, we, I think it's, I think it's going to be more of an issue if we, as a board, put in a request of a condition that, you know, that there be a certain entrance. And we can certainly prefer, and, and operationally, the building transportation office can say, we prefer trucks to come in one entrance and out the other. But the, the, the reality of things, yes, the, the, the train tracks with the queuing, queue management, the signaling until that's, that it's been reviewed and redone by, by Mastot and Needham. I think it's, we, we can't, or we shouldn't say that deliveries need to come in only through West or only through Highland, or, you know, I, I think that's, that's because the conditions of that area vary so much because of the train, because of regular traffic. I think trucks are going to come in. If we just say deliveries in the rear, great, they can come in through either entrance. That's my personal opinion. But.
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, when I, I think realistically, what will happen, even if he said West Street, UPS driver, wherever they're coming from, if they were, if they had a possibility of coming down Morton and Melon, they aren't necessarily going to all of a sudden go down to West Street and take a left on Webster, left on Webster from Webster, then go that way. They may be all just go to Highland Avenue, then over to West.
I, I, I think the condition is that the deliveries are in the rear, you know what I mean? And so how they get to the rear, you know, there's two entrances, and it all depends upon their, their routes and, you know, and, and where they are. So I think, I don't think there's a need to say they must come through West or they must come through Highland.
Yes, yes, as I was saying, yeah. So I don't think it's going to be of any benefit, first to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, I understand that, I understand the neighbors, I totally do. But I think again, as far as the construction vehicles, you can do something about that.
Yeah.
You have control over that one, you just don't have another control over it.
Agreed.
Eric had a really insightful about people.
Yeah, I, I, I can't believe we, we left off an operational place, but we did.
I can believe it.
So if you look at section 318, I think the sentence that begins, prior to any change in the entity operating the facility, other than a change to an affiliated entity under, under common control of GS, HNA Needham Owner, comma, LLC, it should add on there, basically that name again, shall provide written notice of the anticipated change to the board, and the new operating entity shall provide a written statement to the board, signed by the person who will be responsible for the operation of the facility, that they have read this decision and acknowledged the terms here are binding on the new entity.
Yep, agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Natasha, have you had a chance to?
I did look at it, and I looked at the comments, it looked like you were talking about the comments regarding, those comments that we just received yesterday also. I don't, I'm not a traffic expert, so I don't know anything about the entrances, you know, of what would be. So I think I'm okay. There were some math errors, like 1898 to 189, was that picked up?
It was just transposed, yes.
So I don't really have any comments.
Thank you, Natasha. Eric, do you have anything else?
I echo the comments that Adam and Tasha raised, but.
Justin, do you have any other comments yourself?
I do not. I, yeah, I, I don't, I think this is great as the way it's drafted.
Okay, thank you.
Chair? I move, I move that we grant requested site plan review under section 3.17.9.4 of the bylaw, and the requested waiver under section 3.17.9.5 of the bylaws, ways of of section 5.1.3, subsection, subsection 5.1.3K, subject to the plan modifications, conditions, and limitations.
Any comments? Hearing none. Take a vote, Justin.
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I move that we adopt the, that we adopt the decision contained in our package tonight as redlined and as further amended by our discussion here this evening.
I second the motion.
Secondly, comments, hearing none. Justin?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That does it for you guys.
Thank you.
Again.
We're looking, we're looking forward to it.
Yes, we are too.
Be excited.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We were delaying as much. Let's do minutes. Let's do the course.
Oh, good.
That's just.
No, no, but you did it?
Yes.
Oh, good, good. Okay, yeah, yeah. No, I'm totally.
We, we, we had a competition between the A and R plan, the Paula zoning change, which could go fast.
You all, thank you.
But yeah, so we sent the Paula to, to the select.
Okay, good, good. So, just the presentation.
Okay, so we're not, we're not ready for the, we're not ready for the 40B Charles River?
They're not, they're not ready to present it yet.
Okay.
Maybe you could sign the A and R plan. Yes. And we're not talking about the, this one mile hour. 1150 or Central Lab, is that 1150? When is that coming to the?
I'm back in Friday for signatures. I can come back to the office for signatures on Friday.
Sixteenth, and then the second, we have 242 Hillside. That's when I'm on here, correct. Yeah. Y'all listen, then you can go. Yeah. Thank you for that catch.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Well, there should be three.
I've read it five times.
I know, I don't believe it. Shouldn't have gotten it.
Well, we are just playing, we're, we're.
Thank you. Okay, cool, cool, cool. And then when you're in, I'll. Yes. That sounds correct. Three and then the mylar.
So Alex, I can come in on Friday and sign the mylar and the rest of those.
Be awesome. You know, I don't need you for the A and R plan. I just need three signatures. So I'm okay because Natasha can't sign.
My signature is better.
I know. But. No, you didn't.
Not coming inside for one or West if you need.
Yes, that I would like. I would. Just do you know that we have short hours on Friday?
Now I do now, but yes, I can come in the morning.
Okay, great.
I've seen the presentation and, you know, it's a phenomenal project. I've seen it several times, two different hats. So forgive me, but. Which has success. It's a. You're reading that.
Okay, so the next item on the on the agenda is we're going to talk to the presentation in forty B project that Charles River Center fifty nine militia heights. And we have with us on this one, looks like we have, at least I have four people mentioned here is the one person online.
Emily Bradshaw can't couldn't have a conflict tonight, so she wasn't able to.
Okay, so why don't you introduce yourselves? I have your name too, but introduce yourself.
Sure thing. My name's Phil Crane. I'm a project manager with the planning office, Urban Affairs.
I'm Joe Capellino. I'm a civil engineer for the project.
Thank you, Joe.
Jason Mansky with TAT. We're the architects for the project.
Welcome, Jason. So when you guys go through the project, so we can see it again. I think we've, I don't know what changes there have been, but you know, we've seen it, but please go through it. Is some of the public we've seen before?
Yes, I'm just getting into the Zoom now, but.
Justin lost it tonight.
Oh, and lose it by the second.
He said power went out in the answer. And I lost my last week because I was in a great area. I had to like buy a T-Mobile phone just for the internet. Where I was, but then it died. So ten seconds into the meeting, I was gone. Okay, let's, okay. Whenever you're ready.
Sure thing. I am. Looking for the Zoom.
Do you need me to send you the link again?
Could you, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I have the ID number. Oh, yeah. Is that easy enough? Just give me the number.
I think sending it would be great.
Are we having a discussion with focus and managers?
No.
And you did the minutes.
Yeah, we did the minutes.
And you did the A and R. I'm totally.
Yeah, like I said, we went as much as we could.
That's good, though. Six items in ten fifteen minutes. That's unheard of. You can come late all the time.
It is true. It is true.
I have not yet, but I just found the Zoom.
Same as what you sent me. I could pull it up, but.
I'm getting into the Zoom now.
Okay, perfect.
I'm in. I think you'll just need some.
Yeah.
There it is. Apologies about that.
Recording in progress.
Trying to figure out how to share my screen.
You need to, when I.
There I go. I got it. Okay, appreciate your patience.
Could you give us just a quick recap as far as we've seen this, but what what's changed in general? I'm just gonna, just at the beginning, what's changed?
Yeah, sure thing. So so since so we we met back in in June. I think fundamentally, the project hasn't changed from, you know, it was eighty six unit supportive housing community. That hasn't changed. I think I think what's what's changed is we had our traffic study was in progress when we when we met back in June. That was completed and that was included with the application. And then we've done some some initial analysis around the stormwater system that we're proposing. And we're in, we should be completing that analysis into a full stormwater report here shortly, so we included a stormwater memo. Otherwise, the, you know, design wise and unique layout, that hasn't really changed. It's just advanced slightly further. So I'll so maybe what will be most helpful is the first half of this presentation. I think most of you have seen it, but I'll just run through that quickly. Please stop me if there's any questions.
Yeah, it could be. I mean, hopefully by then Justin may be back when he starts talking maybe some of the traffic. He's just loves traffic.
Okay.
He doesn't love traffic.
Well, that's it's great because that's at the end, so we could talk about that then.
Philip, just so that they're aware, for you to just explain where you are in the process.
Yeah.
You're here now more kind of like in a formal capacity for the planning board to provide comments to the ZEA and sort of like where you are in the process.
Yeah, yeah. So 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 as you're aware, we have a we have a an application to the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit. Our first hearing is tomorrow night. And so we're here now to receive more comments for that process. So that way we can incorporate any any comments or any feedback that you have or the public has into our plans. Probably won't be for tomorrow night's hearing, but for the for the subsequent hearing. So far, we've met with, we've, you know, we've met with you all back in June. We met with design review board. We met with town staff earlier in the year to get their comments. And and then we met with design review board earlier this month for a second round of meeting and getting informal feedback there on the plans. And then we we've met with conservation commission. We did receive comments from from departments and boards and we're we're working through those now. And so what we what we discussed here and any comments that come after will be working to address those.
Yep.
So I think I think we've seen this slide. Really, this is just explaining that this isn't just a typical affordable housing development. This is a little bit more than that. This is an integrated supportive housing community. We're at a scale that hasn't been, you don't typically see for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. That's typically in a group home. Here we're proposing eighty six units with thirty eight of those set aside for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Alongside traditional affordable and workforce housing. In four buildings. The project team. Charles River Center owns the land now and is part also the co-developer with the planning office, Urban Affairs. We're a nonprofit affiliate with the Archdiocese. We do affordable housing across Massachusetts. And I'm joined here tonight with our architect and our civil engineer. We also have a landscape architect, unfortunately, is was unavailable, but she would be here as well. I think she was here at the June and then a gold student stores is our land use attorney. This is our, you know, our overview of the project here. I mentioned eighty six units to that will be affordable to households earning between thirty percent, eighty percent area median income. That would be, you know, a single person household is earning, you know, bringing in about thirty three thousand dollars a year. For someone that's at eighty percent AMI and a, you know, two person household, that's somewhere around a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So a really big range that's going to be able to hit a lot of needs in the community. A few other, you know, really what we think are really positive impacts for Needham. We'll be having a local preference for those eighty six units up to seventy percent. We have to work with the state for that with for that preference, but that's something we'll we've committed to do. You're getting eighty six units that will count towards your subsidized housing inventory. You know, you're over ten percent now. They'll 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 count towards that SHI and then when you're when the when you have to recount in twenty thirty. You should that should help you keep you over ten percent so you can have more friendly forty Bs if you have those. And, you know, we're doing all electric passive house buildings, so it's going to be highly sustainable. And the, you know, don't have to say this, we'll say it again, the need that what we're hitting has been identified in in the community preservation. Plan and and then, you know, one one last piece to mention is that this is a property that to my knowledge has never been on the tax roll for Needham. So you're taking a property that was owned by the army, owned by a nonprofit, and you're putting it on the tax roll for the town. So that's pretty, I think that would be pretty exciting as well. The project design hasn't really changed from when we met in, you know, fundamentally, since we met in in June. We have building A, which is going to be our multi-family three story building. That's going to be where it's going to house most of the units, most of the the larger common area amenities like the community room. Management offices. And lobby amenity spaces. Buildings E, C, and D are single story buildings that will be towards the front of the development, so it's kind of stepping up as you go back. Those will be, each of those will be identical, six, six studio units with a common area in the middle that will that's supposed to encourage folks to. You know, get out of your unit for a little bit and commingle. It's very, very, very important to the Charles River Center program. I think for the for what we've proposed and what we've created here is has been really driven by Charles River Centers program. Making sure that that program is what's driving the design. And we've, I think we've done a good job doing that. Another feature here, sixty one parking spaces. It's about one to one for the affordable, traditional affordable housing units and a little less than half a space per unit for the Charles River Center households. That's informed by their experience on on their other projects. Most of their population don't own cars or drive less frequently. And as I think we've mentioned in June, we are looking into doing a shuttle service as a partnership with with North Hill. Terms of timeline, November, which is ending now soon. We're, you know, we got our comprehensive permit. We've been meeting. We're going to have our first hearing tomorrow night with the zoning board. The other important pieces here is there's a this project will go through a funding round with EOHC, the executive office, housing in the local communities. That is happening simultaneously while we're going through zoning. And, you know, all that application will be due in March. And July, that's when they typically announce their funding awards. We'll we'll see it seems like everything's getting pushed back a couple of months sometime next summer. And then we anticipate if our application is successful, that will be starting construction in March twenty twenty seven.
Can I ask you a quick question? So the applicant is Charles River Heights LLC.
Correct.
But what's the affiliation with Charles River Center? Is there one or is there?
There is. We're, so the Charles River Heights LLC is owned by fifty fifty by an entity controlled by the planning office and Charles River Center. So they'll that will ultimately be what's called in the low income housing tax credit speak, the ownership entity. So they'll own the building. Charles River Center will continue to own the land. So that's that's why they're the applicant, you know, for the for the comprehensive permit. Just a few photos of the site. You can you can see from from the from the aerial here used to contain twelve single family homes that were for active duty military personnel. Charles River Center purchased the property back in October of twenty twenty three. And then and then they they demolished the homes that were there. And it's currently, you can kind of tell the north there right above the Charles River Heights. It's currently being used as an overflow parking area for Charles River Center. Just a couple, you can see there, viewed looking down towards Dwight Road. See, this site's pretty relatively clear and kind of flat, but it does kind of taper off a little bit there and Joe can talk a little bit about the grading. And then, you know, one of the great features about this site is. Is that we're surrounded by really good tree coverage. And we're trying and, you know, I think our our goal here is to keep as much of that as possible. We think that will help, you know, any any visual intrusions. I know that design review board had some comments on lighting that we're working through now. Of course, all of our site lighting will be dark sky compliant. And and we're looking at different ways to to make sure that light from the interior doesn't bleed outside.
You know, we've talked about, you know, lights that comply and so, but we've also talked about, you know, the phrase. You know, light trespassing another property, we're trespassing sometimes as far as what's happened with that as far as. A light study as far as lumens, as far as, I mean, and there's lots of trees around there anyway, so to what degree it matters, I'm not certain. Although it matters to wildlife, to what degree are you doing something as far as the light leaving the property itself? Not going up. Going up is one thing, but leaving a property is something else. What's going on? What's happening with that?
Yeah, so we had our landscape architect had a photometric study and a lighting plan that was included with the application. She's not, unfortunately, she's not here, so we won't be able to to go into great detail about it. But one of the comments that we got from design review board was now that you have a more more accurate tree count, which was what we we were finalizing here. And and to to go back and take another look to see where where the lights bleeding off the property or further down. So we can try to try to maybe look at different solutions to to try to minimize that that light trespassing you mentioned.
It does make a difference.
Yeah.
Sometimes well houses, but in this case it's perhaps more for the. Force more.
Yeah. And it is up higher on a hill, so just trying to try to minimizing the the light from the property is definitely something we're we're thinking about and. And trying our best to try to minimize that. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe to just quickly, you know, to talk through our site plan. I don't think too much has changed since we were we were here, but Joe.
Sure, yeah. So this is just our layout plan and obviously we have access from the intersection of Dwight Road. East militia heights drive, which at this time aren't heavily trafficked roadways. So we really kept the site entrance. Where almost where it is today. And then we brought two way circulation in. You can see the three one story buildings that show mentioned more towards the front of the site and as you go to the rear of the site, which north is kind of page left here, plan left. But as you get plan right or south, you see building A, which is a three story larger building. We do, we did prioritize having sort of like a functional drop off in front of that building. And then beyond that. We actually went with one way circulation actually to minimize the aisle widths because of what you don't see here on this is. And the reason we were, you know, finalizing our tree count is all those perimeter trees, just trying to tighten up our disturbance. So and actually, we think that's just a safer solution to have that one way circulation twenty foot wide for fire. All the way around the back of building A, so you can see the angled spaces behind building A because of one way circulation. You also see that we have some. Our three way crossing in the center of the site, that's actually be a raised tabletop crossing. Just, you know, safer for the residents, the community. We actually have some speed tables as, you know, you have those longer runs of twenty foot wide, one way circulation. The layout itself, I don't think it changed. The layout itself, um, I don't think it changed since June, at least where the buildings are. Uh, we might've added some detail to this, um, with the crossings and whatnot, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, we think it's a great layout for the, for this, for the structures we're going for here.
And, and the, the raised crossings, we want, we, you know, we want our residents to be safe, but we also know that a lot of people use the air. Every time I'm up there, I see people walking their dogs or kids riding their bikes. We want to make sure that it's safe for not just our residents, but for the, the broader Needham community to come up and, and, you know, there's the, you know, you're able to use the sidewalks and it's, it's a beautiful sight to just walk around. Uh, so we, but we would love it if people could take advantage of that. Next.
Sure. So this is, um, a utilities plan and it actually shows all the utilities, but, you know, focus on the gray areas, which are some subsurface stormer management systems, uh, that we plan to install. Actually tomorrow, we have some field work going on there. We're going to be digging some deeper test pits to make sure we are, you know, have a solid seasonal high groundwater. See what our, um, textual analysis comes back as for infiltration rates. Actually, you know, one of the issues up here, and I think residents have complained in the neighborhood that the soils in this area, um, pretty tight, a lot of fines. Um, they don't infiltrate as well as you would think for these wooded areas. There's been issues at North Hill and the detention ponds leading, you know, all the way back fifteen years ago. I talked to some colleagues today. We worked on a detention pond to the north that has been reworked a few times because of just poor infiltration. So we're trying to look at this before we, you know, go into detailed design. So we're doing that field work tomorrow, to get more data on the storm water. But obviously, I will say the, versus the existing conditions, building A is a pretty large structure. We are increasing the, um, imperable area a little bit. So obviously we're, um, proposing some systems to mitigate that, for runoff rates and volume. And obviously, um, you know, just water quality that's going to be required, through CONCOB or just stormwater management standards.
You know that, you know, we recently upgraded that stormwater bylaws as far as how much needs to be mitigated. What is, what is being mitigated?
So that, and that, I think that's a comment you offered us in June. So the bylaws previously said one inch. What's shown is an inch and a half here.
That's what we upgraded.
Yeah. So we, we took that comment into consideration. So we wouldn't have to, you know, keep fumbling around with this. This actually is, is an inch and a half. And actually, it works out well for us, you know, pending the, you know, the results of what we see underground tomorrow, um, that we can do this. Because, because of the increase in roof area and the pavement we're adding, we actually need that volume to control the rates. And we're actually pushing a lot of the water, the three systems on the north side, so page left, they're all going to overflow to Dwight Road through a hard pipe system. So instead of discharging overflow, that could run through the woods potentially to neighboring properties, um, we're going to use the, meet the, um, closed pipe drainage that, uh, extends out of Charles River Center, um, just a bit to the, uh, page north there, you can see. And goes all the way down Dwight Road. Yeah. Um, the system behind building A will, um, discharge into the woods, um, to the south. But, I mean, we have a, a large volume plan there and the discharge events are going to be few and far between. Um, and we'll have a full analysis for that. So someone could, could see when those events might take place.
If you're far between, usually based on.
It's a twenty-five-year event, you're going to see some discharge.
We've been having a hundred-year that's recent.
Yeah, sure. And, well, yeah, recently, I, no, so we're using Atlas fourteen, you know, we're, we're analyzing up to the hundred-year event. We can tell you, you know, the volume and rate that's going to be discharged in those events. Don't know off the top of my head, but.
When, when you, when you do the test this morning, make something change if you, if you made the comments about the permeability of the.
Sure. Um, it might actually be, it might actually be more advantageous if we hit some higher groundwater. Or we have some poorly drained soils, it might be more advantageous to have a detention system rather than an infiltration system, or at least have detention elements to slow water down more, protect surrounding properties, rather than focusing all on infiltration. And that, that's something we're, we're used to pivoting to depending on subsurface. So everything we do will be informed by what's going on, um, in the soils. Um, so we're working to get that information. But I think what we have here is that inch and a half volume, which will remain regardless. But how, you know, how we get into the ground or how it's going to act in an overflow of that, like a hundred-year storm will, will have better information.
I can probably see that as being the biggest thing that may come back in the future. If this, if this a, if it's, if it's undersized, let's say.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Some, any version of like the size as far as surrounding properties.
Yeah, so.
That's a, that's a big, that's a big Indian.
I could tell you here, these, um, these arch chambers we're showing, um, are five feet deep right now. So obviously we're being aggressive. We want to make sure that we can do that five foot. Obviously there's cover, there's stone below a five-foot deep system. It's really eight feet deep. So we need to check our, that's why we're digging twelve-foot deep minimum test pits tomorrow to see if we have the two to four feet separation of groundwater and also have our geotechnologist here, um, look at the soil layers. So we're doing that in advance of all the things and trying not to be on our back for, uh, on, on that. And it's a great point, and I think it's going to be a big topic of discussion through our comprehensive permit because this land feature is really interesting. We actually drain off, or the existing site drains off to all four sides. So Dwight Road goes downhill away from the site. East militia Heights goes downhill away from the site. It's the wooded areas to the south, east and west. All are draining down. So the only, the only thing that's like up, upland from us is North Hill and Charles River Center itself. But everything else is draining off the site. So we're very mindful of that, that we need to be careful how we're discharging. That's more water. Obviously, um, there is an ancient sewer that is, you know, used to service twelve homes and services other, facilities up on the hill that we'll be connecting to. We are looking to meet with water and sewer to talk about the water connection, how we're going to meter this. I think we'll have a new meter vault. Um, obviously the, the old water service, I don't think is sized appropriately because we're going to have modern, up to code fire protection for the multifamily building. So there'll be some, there's some work ahead of us for that. But we're, we're looking to schedule, well, we are scheduling those meetings in December.
I'm going to turn it over to Jason Masek to just talk through the, uh, the building design and the floor plans.
That's fine. So again, Jason Mansky with T A T with the architects. So starting on the left side of the plan, those are the three one-story buildings. Everything in blue you see there are residential units. So each of those buildings are identical. They're just mirroring images of one another. So they each have six studio units. And when I say studio, what I mean by that is they have their own individual bathroom and a small kitchen and a living and sleeping area. So they're self-contained apartment units. But then they also have in the orange space in the middle, a, a gathering space, a common space. So folks have their own individual private areas, but they can also get together in this communal area, have, um, dinners together, watch movies and whatnot. And then each of those buildings has their own private outdoor space patio on the backside associated with them. And then as we get into the, the three-story building, building A, um, the, the large, uh, orange space that you see is a community room, that's about four thousand square feet. So that will be a multi-use room. So we have a kitchen in it. But it can be set up to be used for meetings, for classrooms, for, uh, yoga classes, things like that. So that's, that's a multi-use, uh, facility. And it's meant for the residents of this development, but also the, the neighborhood at large. So other folks can come there and use that. Uh, again, in that building, the blue boxes are residential units and the different tones show the different sides. So the lightest blue are studios, the medium blue are one beds, and the darkest blue are two-bedroom units. And mixed within those are CRC units and also traditional affordable housing. So they're, uh, intermingled within the building. So this is just the second floor. Again, that carries up, um, everything stacks within the building except for the area that's above the, uh, community rooms. Obviously. So here we have units that are above that community room space. In the third floor, which is identical to, to level two. Uh, so this is a roof plan. We, we show this just to demonstrate our concept for the mechanical design. The specific equipment isn't spec, uh, specified yet, but in general, our approach is to put all that equipment in the middle of the, the roof. So one, it's over the corridors and not over the, uh, apartment units. So it's quieter for residents. But it's also gathered in the middle so that the sightlines from the grade are better. So that for the most part, you can't see this equipment from the ground around the perimeter. So that's why we show this conceptual roof plan. And again, some renderings that is probably similar to the ones you saw last time. But, uh, the top one is your approach into the development from pedestrian level. You can see the small one-story buildings in the foreground, in the three-story building in the, in the background, uh, that's sort of center. Or that three-story building is the community space, which is the sort of glassy space that you see right in the middle of that image. And that's really meant to be the sort of part, uh, the, the center of the entire development.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The roof plan that you showed is that of a, of a smaller unit of, uh, the small houses or is it a large building?
The roof plan was the larger building.
That's what I thought. Yeah. Cause I didn't see the holes for the, so for the, for the smaller buildings, where are the mechanicals?
So it's probably going to be really difficult to see, but we do have a screened element. It's on the back of the buildings that, um, is meant to, uh, so hide that mechanical equipment. Of course, it'll be much smaller equipment because the, the units are much smaller.
But all electric is.
It's all electric.
So, yeah. Basically.
Sorry. The heat pumps, yeah. So right there, uh, you can kind of see a roof screen that's hiding that equipment from the back. So this, this image is similar to the top one, except it's taken from more in an aerial view so that you can see more of the site. But again, the idea is that we're stepping up in scale, the lower scale as you enter and then the, the larger building further back.
Do, do you have any sustainable, um, goals for the project?
So we'll be passive house.
Or we'll be passive.
Yeah.
Okay. That's great.
Any plans for solar on the new surface?
Yeah, we're, we're, uh, when we get a little bit further in design, we'll engage a consolar consultant to do a feasibility study. And, um, you know, but from, just judging from Charles River Center, which had solar panels on their roof for, for many years, it's probably a very good site for solar. So we'll, we're, that's, that's certainly something we're going to be interested in doing, especially having an all-electric building. Um, that will help, help, uh, keep costs down on the operating side, but also, uh, we think, you know, we'll just, it will just be a net positive for, for sustainability too. Um, it will have, it will be, um, you know, and it will also be passive house, but it also has to be enterprise green, community certified. Um, and that's required by E O H L C.
So here the, the top image is from the courtyard side. So now this is the back of building A. So we have a, an outdoor courtyard, but that will also serve as a residential entrance since most of the parking for the residents will be in the back of the building. And then the bottom image is the front door to building A, which again, you see all that glass face on the ground floor. That's the community room. And the entrance is right smack in the middle of that slide. Yes, I think this might be the last one. Um, so these are a couple of images of the smaller one-story buildings. So on the top, on the left side of that, you can see that mechanical screen a little bit. It's kind of a wood toned, um, slat wall that hides that mechanical equipment. And then the bottom image is, is from the front of those units. Again, that, that common area is the blue space in the center and the two wings of the, the studio unit wings.
This brings us to traffic. So, uh, we don't have a traffic engineer here today, uh, but, but just to, you know, just from the, you know, what we, you know, the, the, the important pieces of the traffic study. So, uh, VHB, we, uh, did perform the actual traffic count back in May before school was out, which is, and, and, and everybody was gone. They, you know, we, we're expecting for, for this project that there'll be minimal traffic impacts during, during rush hour. Uh, where we are exploring, we, we, ways to direct traffic away from, from central app. Just it's, it's, it's working with, uh, with, with Babson, who also has rights to, uh, the road there. The other, the other piece that we really think is going to help minimize traffic impacts at the site um, is, is the shuttle service that we'll be providing. So that shuttle is what we're intending it to be is to, uh, stop by, you know, regular intervals to the site, um, and, and take people to different parts of towns, uh, can, can, and connect it to a commuter rail, um, and, and Needham Center and, and other commercial areas to, to get them, uh, you know, off-site, but out, but out of there, but not taking a personal vehicle. Uh, we'll also have bicycle parking spaces available on-site. We, we have, we've been talking with Charles River Center about maybe having like a, like a bike share program on-site to, to try to, to try to get people just out of their cars and, um, and, uh, and, uh, using other forms of transportation. This, this, the traffic study we included with the comprehensive permit application, you know, with that application, had a lot of studies and information with it. Uh, we're happy to, you know, pull any of that out to, to share, um, if that's helpful.
Eric, do you have any thoughts to start?
Sure. Yeah. First of all, thank you for coming back. Uh, it's a beautiful project. It's a, it's a very worthy project. So if they think for all the work that's gone into it, um, curious to see in the pictures, what they didn't see in the pictures, and maybe you can describe some of the, what you're going to put up there. You had mentioned earlier that members of the community are often walking their dogs. And so I'm actually thinking about members of this community in terms of, they're going to be like walking paths, park benches, eating spaces to sort of, you know, encourage using the outdoors in this, in this facility, which you got some great natural elements on there. It's going to be a beautiful space. So just curious, uh, for both, uh, the communities living there, but also for the greater community.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, our, our landscape architects on here for, for that, but I can, I can, you know, I could, I could, uh, I could help inform some of that. So we, we are looking into what kind of walking trails connection, connections we can have on the site up there. Uh, we do have this, we have like a, a crosswalk that's going to go from the site to Dwight Road. Looks like a lot of the trails don't actually connect to the site. So we'll, we're looking at different ways to, to try to bring people through to, to walk up. It does, every time I go up to that site, I feel like I'm like, I don't know, somewhere else or something. It's, it's really beautiful up there. So we definitely want the community to continue to enjoy it. We are looking at, we, the landscape plan right now, uh, which hasn't, hasn't, uh, changed so much since we were here last time. But it's going to be a mix of, uh, a programmed and unprogrammed space. And some of that will include benches and, um, and areas for, for seating and viewing. Um, and we have talked with, uh, Charles River Center about having some type of outdoor planting, uh, program, uh, where we would, where we'd not just be open to just our residents, but also the greater Needham community.
That'd be terrific. And just, I, I won't get into it, but just to be very points that have been raised earlier, plus in our, in our last meeting. Definitely need to, to keep attention on, uh, stormwater drainage, just with the, you know, looking at the map, the neighborhoods all downhill. And then as already mentioned before, the, the lighting too, it's certainly going to come up. But, uh, thank you. Uh, this is a terrific project.
No, I feel the same way. I think it's a great project and, um, incredibly worthy. And, and I can agree with you. If there could be more opportunities for people to be able to, to walk around and to have exterior space, that would be great.
Could you share again as far as the, uh, the percentage of units that are going to be offered for Needham?
Yes.
And obviously some percent of these are four inches. Um, people would, in different abilities.
Yeah, yes. Sure thing. So, so, so half of the units are, of the eighty-six units are going to be for the Charles River Center program. So it's a forty-three. So the other forty-three units will, uh, will, will be, will, uh, will be marketed through a, through a lottery process. Uh, that's, that's governed by the, by this, by state and federal laws. And, uh, as part of that, well, those forty-three units, seventy percent of those, up to seventy percent, uh, will be, will have a local, a local preference attached to them. So Needham, Needham residents, uh, uh, people that work in Needham for the town, or if they work in a business here, or if they have, uh, children in the school, Needham school system, uh, they'll all have a local preference, uh, for that, for that, for that lottery. Um, that's a, and that's something that we, uh, that we'll have to work with the state on to, uh, to, to make sure that, that we can get the seventy percent. But that's, uh, we, we, we've done that in other communities and, um, you know, you're usually able to get that local preference.
As a member of town meeting, when we were voting on it was that it was stated about that, you know, we're voting this here's a preference and so. You know, obviously the, the main thing is it's a great project. And, and certainly as far as having the public come up there, and to what degree the public is going to come out there as far as to walk around the amenities. I'm not certain. It's great that I do want to talk about the, the, the space there, the shared space. But it's great to have the public just to be aware that it exists, that these, these, these communities exist, that to some degree. That to some degree, that's the, that's the biggest plus, the fact that it's not, it was not out of sight. It's in sight. Now, could you share a little bit more about the community room and how that's going to be dealt with as far as shared access?
Sure. Yeah. So we, so Charles River Center and in the planning office, we've committed to to have that community space be, you know, just it's an amenity for the residents where they'll. As Jay mentioned, it's a multipurpose space where we'll have. Some, you know, we'll have some functions that will be programmed, whether we bring in a, you know, an outside vendor to do a yoga class. Or or maybe a, maybe a cooking class or some type of, or maybe it's a, you know. Financial literacy or or any number of those programs. And we'll, we, you know, we'll, we'll invite the, you know, community members from from Needham to to come and and and, you know, they wanna take advantage of that space. To to or or to to attend those courses. They're welcome to do that. And then the other, the other piece is if, let's say there's a, you know, a, a group that needs a meeting space in town. We've heard that there's, that that's a need here. So so that that will be available to 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 book that space. For folks to to use it for some, for a meeting, if for, you know, whether it be like, I don't know, like a Boy Scouts or something meeting, that's a. They can, they can, they can reserve the space for that. We do have, it, we do have, I, I think we do have an outside entrance that goes right into the community room, so they'll have easy access to and. We haven't worked out exactly how we're going to, to do that. We'll probably have some type of portal. That that folks can book with with the management company that we'll have here. But but that's the intention is to to make the programming's program available to the greater community, but also the space itself. So if people want to reserve it for a function, they can.
Are there any other terms? So it sounds like, oh, sure. Sure. Sure, we'll allow it.
Per rule, I think I'll say I'm Ken Buckley from Long Street in Needham, I'm a resident. But very, very glad to see such a, a great project going in. I was. To dovetail in what Artie just said about the. About the community room and the use. Somehow I know, somewhere in the future, you'll figure out how to manage it. One of the things I was interested in though is that. The sixty one parking spaces. Think is targeted around the number of residents. I'm assuming there'll be staff as well and visitors. And so, and especially if you want the community room to. Attract people from within the town to come to the events you might have yourself, the yoga classes, but also the used meeting space. I think you're gonna need more, a little bit more parking. And one of the things I was thinking about is, as I looked at the site plan, there's a, a maybe an apron that could be used if you don't asphalt it, but maybe a. Permeable layer gravel for people to park. That way you don't have a runoff problem, but at least it would allow for more people to come to the space and enjoy it. Just wanted to.
Thank you again. And I know that the Charles River Center has some fairly good parking space and to what degree it's used, let's say off hours, which I phrase. I'm sure there'll be some, some shared space there.
Yeah, I think, I, I think, you know, I can't speak for Charles River Center, but I think that that, that, you know, during off hours, I, and that's where we're imagining someone would, you know, someone would book a community, the community room space. We think that that, that's, that that probably wouldn't be a problem during the, during the day. You know, a lot of, we, we, we don't typically have a problem with with management having parking spaces or visitors because we have residents will go to work. And they'll come back and some of the management will leave and they'll be done for the day. There will be managed, someone on site every day and on, and on call twenty four seven. So so we, we don't, we don't anticipate a, a problem there, but we'll, we can look into seeing, you know, if there's, there's a way to create any.
How does that work? So so if there's none of the comments, I think, I think from the board, our, our concerns have been, the shared concerns have been the stormwater runoff. Lighting. And was there anything else we wanted to share as far as going to see?
The recreational, like walking space.
Recreational walking space, how that will work. So there's a couple of, a couple of main concerns there. Some of that's you, you know already, you know, just kind of reemphasize things we've talked about.
Yeah, I mean, each building does have a, have an outdoor space that our landscape architect Jay are designing. So there's it like. It's important to show that that. That courtyard on the south of building A, that's fully programmed space. And then you can see that. The round space between the two smaller buildings on the left side of the page, and there's also a programmed patio space behind that. Kind of near the most building there. And then that's, that's just a programmed space and there's the spaces beyond. So I just think, because Rebecca here, we'd have a lot more to say, but. They're certainly there and we're, it's part of what we're, what we're thinking.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So again, again, just ran for stormwater lighting trespass and and how you handle that to make sure it doesn't have, come back in the future and cause a problem. I think, Russell, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I think we, you do need to vote actually, because we make a formal recommendation to the Z D A. On the application. So you probably want to, you know, indicate support of the project and then articulate. Those areas that you want to make sure that they address. And I guess what I heard was the stormwater and the lighting and all the exterior space was being utilized.
Yeah, we're creating an amenity for the exterior.
Right.
For someone like to make the formal.
Motion for the support, to support the project with, to, but no, our sort of three areas of concern, a recommendation to discuss. The first being lighting. The second being stormwater drainage, and then the third, the outdoor recreational community space.
Right.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Eric.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your time, guys.
We're looking forward to the project and I know, I'm sure you guys as well. Do we have any correspondence? Anything, any other correspondence? I know Susan Herman sent something related to it. But we covered that, yeah.
It was. zoning. Change for the city of. Maybe interested related to their parking requirement. And. On December second, we're gonna talk about. The parking study that we're doing. So it's kind of relevant, but you know.
I'm not, I'm not there for that meeting amount.
Alex, can you talk a little bit more about the relevance of the Newton, how that's gonna affect our conversation?
Well, it's not gonna affect our conversation. It's just sort of. An FYI, what neighboring towns are doing.
Is there anything else? I don't see anything else on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, no comments? Yeah, Eric.
Hi.
Natasha.
Hi.
Share what's I would do. Thank you everyone, appreciate it very much. Okay, Lee.